Call the meeting to order. Sorry, we're a few minutes late, but we had some technical difficulties, as they say. Let me please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the consent agenda. By the way, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the April 13th, 2020 council meeting. Approval of April 17th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $120,744.24. Approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of CoBank interim financing debt in the amount of $37,381.34. Approval of the March Finance Report. Acceptance of the Beautification Commission minutes. Acceptance of the Library Board minutes. Acceptance of the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee minutes of April 13th, 2020. Acceptance of the Ways and Means Committee minutes on April 13th of 2020. Resolution of employment in the Fire Department. Approval of liquor license for the Veterans Club, Pizza Hut, Two and High V. Approval of total claims in the amount of $425,443.05 with one claim over $75,000 to PKG contracting of $184,825.98. I've taken a motion to approve.
So move.
My second.
Moved by Gandy, a second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay, we have no public appearances tonight. So we'll go right to the resolutions, action items, and ordinances. We have an action item, consideration of a change order number 28 for wastewater treatment plant improvements, bid package number one, the treatment facility improvements. This is an increase of $80,949.88. Are you going to talk about that, Erin?
Yep. What they're doing is they're putting on some splash guards around the screw pumps. Because the plant was built to such a size because of all the water infiltration that we had, the pumps are having a hard time slowing down enough to handle that, the lower level water flow, so it's creating a lot of splash in the, in that, in the screw pump areas. So what this does, this allows us to somewhat control that and to control the splash out of the raw water. The, this, this will help us keep a little bit cleaner facility with, with the addition of this. So it's not a big expense, especially if we look at what we're going to reduce in cost on the next item. And it's recommended by both our, both McClure and by our city engineer. And Sean.
Motion to approve. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any more discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously for that change order in the amount of $80,949.88. The next is also a change order number 29 for the wastewater treatment plant. And this looks like a less, less of $94,927.14.
Yep, and what's happening here is with the addition of the clarifier equipment that we're putting in, we're losing, we're not using as much finances to paint the original equipment because we're pulling them out. So that's saving us $90,000. So that adjustment there is a good thing for us to allow to do the splash guard stuff with the, with the screws pump areas and then still saving us a little bit of money by not having to paint the old equipment that we're replacing.
I move approve a change order number 29 for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Ham. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Martha.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that change order number 29 was approved unanimously.
Right.
Okay, next action item is consideration of a memorandum of agreement with the state of Iowa to participate in the income offset program, which we heard about last time. Do you want to just go over that real quick?
So what that works would be doing would be collecting unpaid utility service accounts through the offset program through the state of Iowa. We'd be able to collect on income tax refunds, casino winnings, lottery winnings, items like that through the state would handle that for us.
Motion to approve. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Great. That was approved unanimously to participate in the income offset program. Now we have our first reading of the ordinance amendment providing and retaining residential customer security deposit of utility services. This is going from $75 to $125 for the deposit, and it will be, not be refunded until after the service is terminated. Anything else you wish to add to that? No. From that committee? Okay.
Just that the 125 was closer to the average bill than the 75. Average bill was about 115. So the hope was that if some people, when they discontinue service, they decide not to pay their final bill, that this would cover that.
Okay, motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously to move that to the second reading. Under the mayor's report, I have two appointments tonight and one you just got at your desk this evening. The first is for Steve Taylor to the Arbor Committee. He's got quite an extensive background, if you see, from his request to serve on this committee. He's also part of the Sierra Club. And first of all, we need to thank the Sierra Club because they gave a gift to the tree on Earth Day, and it was planted out at Park and Rec. And it was a nice gift, and so we certainly hope we're going to have more, more tree plantings. They have kind of, they're working on a plan to plant more trees, and so we really want to get the Arbor Committee running and more involved and help them and...
What are some of the responsible, our tasks of the Arbor Committee?
Well, Michael, you want to talk about what they've done in the past?
Yeah, so I'm the council liaison, and in 2013, we responded to the Emerald Ashbore discovery. We're the second city in Iowa to have Emerald Ashbore discovered in our town, second only to Burlington. And that meant that we were going to lose 15 to 20% of all our trees, because it destroys ash trees. And we worked with the Department of Natural Resources, put together a urban forest management plan, and that was probably the main focus of that group at the time. And then we lost our sustainability coordinator and didn't really have as many tree projects going, and this was basically the group stop meeting. And now there's new interest, and the Sierra Club wants to put together some sort of, they have people interested in donating money for trees, and so they want to put together something where people can get trees if they want them. And we'll see here, coming up later down the list, that Steve has already looked at our, our list of approved trees for right-of-way plantings and made some recommended changes. So it would be great for the Arbor Committee Commission to meet and look that over. One member of the, of the Arbor Commission is Ray Len, who's a district forester for the Department of Natural Resources. So he's invaluable, and this is his day job. So I think with him and Steve together, we'll have a lot of knowledge about what appropriate plantings look like. So it'd just be a great time to, to look at that. There seems to be interest in the community, interest in the nonprofit sector, to plant more trees in town, and this would just provide guidance for that. I don't see the group meeting a lot, but the first task would be to update the tree list and give some guidance in terms of what trees are appropriate and what locations. So I don't want to get into it too much, but when we get to the tree list, there's, there's a lot of interesting variables, and I'm, I understand about that much compared to Steve, whose knowledge is vast. But there's a lot of considerations in planting a tree, say, in the right-of-way. We'll talk about that later. Thank you.
So you can see, he's got a extensive background in horticulture, and I think he's going to be a great committee member, so I would ask for approval for Steve Taylor.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Great. Thank you. And on the Animal Control Committee, I have spoken with Gordon Sheckelford, and he has agreed also to be on this board. He's worked a lot with dogs in the past, and one of the things that I'm looking at is, you know, this, this summer, we are going to be short on police staff, and we don't have an animal control officer. So in the short term, I want this committee to meet and talk and see how we can potentially help our community with any dog issues that we might have. He said he's already seen some dogs running loose, and anyway, so we want to see if we can't get ahead of that before we're full on in summer. And so I'd take a, if you're okay with that, a motion to approve, Gordon?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Ham.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? One of the things that has come out of what we've been in is, I think, and I just want to mention this very briefly, is our ability to communicate with the whole community. You know, not everybody's on the internet, not everybody has a computer, not everybody's on Facebook. So one of the things that I've noticed is we've had a little bit of trouble reaching out to absolutely everybody. So there is something called mutual aid that some communities do. I did mention this to Brett Farrell, our emergency management coordinator. We would like to work towards having a mutual aid group here. And basically what that means, in, in a nutshell, basically, is trying to get smaller neighborhoods and maybe a captain of that neighborhood where they're in charge of, or can communicate with 25 houses or 30 houses or whatever. This is used for emergencies, you know, like if there was a tornado, for example, something more significant in the community. I think this could also be used for, you know, what we've been through right now. It could also be used for neighborhood beautification. These neighborhoods find out what their needs are in their own community, like, you know, Mrs. Smith that's 90 can't shovel her walk, and maybe there's somebody in her little neighborhood that can. So, you know, I guess I'm just letting you know that I want to work with Brett and see if we can't get that off the ground over time and be able to then have some good communication that's more personal out to every single individual. You know, we, one thing that we came up with, you know, almost a month ago was when we were dealing with this, could we use the water bill system? Well, the problem is that it, those water bills go out over time, and so things were changing so rapidly that that was not a very good way to communicate with our whole community. So hopefully, over time, we can get something in place that's a little bit more personal and can get, get to every household. Then this morning, people watched the governor's conference, press conference. She is talking about reopening. Our county is one of the counties that can reopen quicker. And Erin and I have been talking about it a little bit, talked to the Public Health today. We're going to try to have a Zoom meeting tomorrow to talk about it, but Erin's been talking with a couple of the department heads. So Erin, that's all I've got for my committee report, so, or the mayor's report. So I guess if you want to talk about that a little bit, and then, then we'll go to the city attorney report.
Do you want me to just go into my stuff while I'm talking, or?
Sure, that's fine.
I've got a few things.
Okay.
So the, so the major option to move open was, was the rec department, or at least the rec center area, not the pools, and probably not the, the older building there, the Roosevelt Building, because that just doesn't work out so well for distancing and stuff like that because of the smaller rooms. But obviously, the Cambridge Sportsplex would, could open up at a reasonable time. Talking to Calvin, he, he would like a little bit of time to get things set up to where he's with, he's dealing, he's being appropriately set up with the social distancing and getting things set up with counting the number of people going through. So his recommendation, he's going to put together a recommendation and meet with his board next week, Monday night. So if we could have a personnel committee meeting sometime after that, so then we can have a recommendation to the council on the 11th, which would then allow us to move forward immediately right after the 11th council meeting, is kind of what we're looking at with them. I would probably make that same recommendation for the library, but of course, the library board has their authority. So if with this recommendation, or with the resolution by the governor, they're allowed to open up on Monday, the 1st, in a limited basis, I'll, I'll let Rebecca make that recommendation to her board. If they would like to open up sooner, that's fine, but I think a more, a more cautionary opening by the city is probably a little bit better than just going, yep, all right, let's do it. So that, now I'll, I'll communicate with Rebecca tomorrow, but that's kind of my feeling is maybe we, more cautious opening than what we're allowed to. This is, would be my suggestion at this point, just as far as the rec center and City Hall and everything at that point. Seeing heads nod, nobody has any other questions or any concerns from that?
Guess not.
Okay, I'll move forward. There's a, there was a couple of streetlights that we would like to get authorized to put in. Couple of them have actually, or one of them has already been authorized to put in at least twice, and it didn't get put in by, it was, it was put through public safety a couple of times, and, and I think I filled things out to do that with, with Alliant, and hasn't been done. So Jason, will you hit on the streetlight authorization link there? We had recommended a, a streetlight to be put at the corner of 9th and Burlington. I think at that point in time, we were worried about the cost. As Melanie's looked into it, the cost is going to be zero. We already have an existing pole, and there's already electricity there, so she's, she would like to recommend a light, put a light there on that intersection immediately. I think we were worried, at that time, we were worried about the cost for that one. So the other, the other one is...
That's a private coming south on 9th.
Well, it's, it's just a streetlight, a white light.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Looks like a stoplight up there.
Right.
I'm going, you already have a light there, so.
Right.
That is a stoplight. I can give a little bit of background.
Yeah, somebody got hit down there, didn't they?
Yes, hit and killed. So this is the intersection, and Melanie and I worked on a grant from the DOT to upgrade, and the work is actually moving forward. Bids are going to be received this week. I took light, took pictures at night, and that's when it became obvious that we have a light issue there, aside from the crossing upgrades. Crossing upgrades will not add light, but that's, that's a stoplight where that red circle is, if you're standing there facing south, and that portion of the intersection is very dark. So again, as Erin said, the poles there, electricity's there, they just have to actually put the light on there. Yep, I remember it, so.
The other one's the same thing. If you, as you can see...
Yeah, we did those too, already.
Uh huh. So apparently, I, I thought we brought it to council for an approval, but we couldn't find the minutes or recommendation from the council. I know I've sent this to Alliant a couple of times, but they don't have that. They had changes of folks working there, so we need to send something more to them. So this time, I thought, we're, I'm just going to make sure that we have it in the council minutes that we've approved these, so that I don't have to do this. I know I've done it twice, so I don't want to do it more than once, or a third time.
Two motions, one for each location.
So, but that one, just for anybody who's not familiar, that's traffic's, and that's an area where they have a lot of employees park, and then when they change shifts, it's usually early morning, so it's dark. And they wanted a light there just to add some more safety as people are crossing. And we did approve it on some level.
These will be the new lights?
A couple of times. This will just be one, one streetlight.
They'll both be the newer version, the newer lights.
Yeah, they will be LED, yes.
Need a motion, one for each light, too?
Yeah, so if I could get a motion for the northwest corner of 9th and Burlington?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? If not, Everett, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
And then the second one would be, it's a 350 feet plus or minus west of 23rd Street on the south side of West Jackson Avenue.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
It's about $2,000, $2,400 per light.
The, the one on West Jackson would be about $23, $2,200. Like I said, the cost for the 9th Street one is essentially nothing because they're just putting an arm and a light up. Ready to move on?
Martha, you were okay with that, right?
I am fine.
Okay, I didn't hear your yes vote, so.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I just wanted to double check. I didn't know if I didn't hear it or you didn't say it, so.
I know, I lose some of that when they go on the other side. It's like, I need to be there.
Right. Well, maybe next, hopefully next time.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, you have more, Erin?
Yep.
Okay.
Just for information, department head evaluations are almost complete. I'm going to have those finished here by the end of this month, and so then they will be given out to the department heads here at the beginning of May. I did my first meeting with Area 15 Policy Board meeting, which was kind of interesting. It was a Zoom meeting, so that was an interesting meeting, but started working with Area 15. That was the one where I took the place of Mayor Malloy rather than Mayor Boyer. We are putting a request for quotes together for the fuel and gas service for the city. Currently, we have used cob oil for a long time. It's kind of piggybacked on the county's contract, but we are going to do one ourselves and see if we can save the city some money with that quote. And the last thing I have, well, sort of.
Are you going to...
Go ahead.
Are you going to send an RFP out, or?
No, I'm just going to do a request for a quote from both Cobb and Elliott. Well, then, any other discussion?
I just was trying to get clear.
Yeah, not a, not an R, I didn't want, yeah, I just wanted a request for a quote from the two. Those are the two big distributors here. Actually, we're going to ask...
Jet, jet gas also has about three or four, they supply the three or four stations.
Jet gas, we're also going to ask him also. Daryl's going to contact him also.
Okay.
So yes, we, we're going to ask him also. And then the last thing, I was contacted by a citizen about doing some recognition for our, the senior classes in both Fairfield and for, what's Maharishi? Maharishi. And we have, and so they're, they have done some initial fundraising to put some banners up to recognize the seniors, not whether or not they graduate or anything, but as seniors, put up banners for all of the seniors since we're, because of the times, it really hasn't done, they don't get the recognition that they could, would have gotten in the past. So I said it would be a good, or we would be willing to or consider putting up the banners on our poles, on the city poles. It would take the city crews a little, they're used to doing it, so it really wouldn't take a lot of time to put up the banners to, as our part of this whole deal. We won't have any other costs other than the actual physical maintenance of putting them up, putting them up and taking them down.
Get names on it, or?
It'll have pictures, basically a senior picture with either...
Pass the 2020?
Yeah, on, on them.
Do we have enough polls for all this?
It'd be about 110, 120 polls.
It'd be 75 polls we have, and there's somewhere between 130 and 150 folks, so there'll be two people on each ban, on each pole. We've kind of worked through that. The, the folks involved have already reached out to a number of businesses and to recognize these students, and they're a couple, they're about $2,000 short of the goal to make this, which has been pretty, pretty astounding for the cost and to get that fundraised in such a short amount of time. So I just wanted the council to be aware and then that, make sure that they were okay with us utilizing that city service to do that.
How long would the banners stay up?
Not, not completely determined yet, but I would say a month or, or so.
They might still have graduation in June, but I don't know yet.
It's tentative right now.
It's tentative, I thought.
The, the communities, or the public schools, I haven't heard about Maharishi.
Well, yeah, we've considered both schools, and there's about...
Are all the obligations, is it with them use the poles and our people put them up?
Yep.
That's it, so.
Yeah. Okay. I need a motion for that, or?
I'd say we need to save city resources.
Authorize use of city service personnel to put up these banners.
Okay, moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Can I vote since I have a senior? Should I abstain?
Well, you've got to recuse yourself.
You don't.
Conflict of interest, big time.
Technically, you don't have a financial interest in the vote, so you can't.
It's just an emotional interest. What's that worth to you?
So why don't we go ahead and call the roll? Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, unanimously approved to use city resources to put up the banners.
Thank you. I guess technically, I have a conflict of interest then, too.
Yeah.
But I was, that's why I've been staying out of it as much as I can as far as contacting businesses and stuff like that. The next thing that we can talk about is the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee meeting on April 20th. At that meeting, we talked, we had two topics. I'm not the head of that committee, Tom Toohill is, but I, or, it's going to be easy enough for me to handle it, just, just because I was bringing the sewer conveyance, construction expenses to the, to the committee anyway. So the, the first thing was the sewer adjustment for 401 West Hempstead. The recommendation is to pay, is to pay the overage of the bill was 408.36 for the sewer charges. None of the water went down the sewer, and the water was, the pipe broke because it froze, and no one was in the, in the residence at the time because the resident had been, has been gone because of a knee replacement surgery. So the committee did make that recommendation to take care of that sewer fee.
Well, we made the recommendation to recommend it to council, so I'm going to make the motion.
That's how I worded it in that.
The water didn't go down the sewer, though.
No, we had a city, city employee check on it.
I'm making a motion to forgive the sewer portion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy to, uh, basically refund four oh eight, four hundred and eight dollars and thirty-six cents for sewer charges.
Correct.
Um, any further discussion?
Oh yeah, we gotta go there, sorry.
Uh, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion was approved unanimously.
The, the second one is a little bit more drawn out. Um, this past summer, this, the Country Club has an irrigation line that uses the affluent water out of the sewer plant to help irrigate their, their golf course. During construction, that line was hit, it was actually hit, dug up, or broke twice by PKG. The line had to be fixed a grand total of five times. So it was hit once, fixed, backfilled, broke open again at the break, and then sucked in rock and gravel down the pipe, fixed, broke open again. So anyway, to make a long story short, the golf course with the gravel and rock getting sucked into the pipe and down to their irrigation had a number of issues of sprinkler heads getting broke, uh, some other equipment getting broke, obviously not being able to get irrigation to their, to their course, which caused some problems with the grass. Anyway, for a long story short, there was about thirty thousand dollars in damages to them. And, and these were actually damages that McClure Engineering was able to confirm with, with the bills. So.
Is this physical damages or landscaping damages or?
No, this is actually physical damages that we confirmed.
They have, I, I don't know the number, but I'm sure, I'm estimating they have well over a hundred sprinkler heads.
Yes.
On the course.
So, we, we've all had that experience with the golf course with step one and a half, but fortunately, having an external engineer looking at it, we've been able to work through that a little bit better this time, I believe. We believe that PKG should pay for this. Um, I had a conversation with PKG a little over a week ago before this meeting, and I was a little disappointed in their response, so I wanted to look at paying this bill through liquidate, or we pay, the city paying the bill and then going to liquidated damages with the golf, with PKG for this. Uh, talking to John, it was, was okay. Um, also with the committee, they felt it was appropriate to go that route. Through the liquidated damages, at this point, we have somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of per contract allowable request for damages. As we look through and liquidated damages, you need to show damage. Uh, the city already can show somewhere around eighty to ninety thousand dollars in damages. If you add that thirty thousand of the golf course, that puts us up to a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. So we're still under the total amount that we're allowed to request for damages per the contract, but as you all know, that becomes a legal request. We could still get those back. So I would like the council to approve us to go through that process. However, I don't want to give the golf course a check because I was also contacted by PKG later this past week, and they want to talk and negotiate with the golf course separately. So if that negotiation fails, I would like us to be able to go down that road of taking care of the golf course and making them whole in this case, and then go through the liquidated damages process down the road, but they are in this process already, or there is a negotiation between PKG and the golf course at this time.
Why did they change their mind?
I can't answer that, I'm not sure.
So this fund of money for damages is either private or city-owned, it doesn't matter? As long as the damages are caused by PKG?
Well, we would be paying the golf course and from our perspective, and we'd be doing it through the USDA note. Um, we would be paying the golf course for that bill, and then we feel that it's PKG's poor workmanship that caused the damage. So yes, it would be PKG's.
Well, I'm just trying to understand who's eligible for this money, anybody in the city, basically?
Well, as long as it's part of the construction prop, yes, they, they could be, they could get that, or we could pay a bill and then go back for that damage.
Yeah, to say a crew comes in and cuts the lateral between someone's property and the main, they're, they have to pay for that. So the other expenses that we're incurring because they're behind on the schedule are, are more interest cost and.
Engineering fees.
Yep, engineering fees. So we're paying continually. So that, that amount that we are incurring goes up daily or weekly.
You say you don't want to write a check to the golf course, so have they already fixed it and we're paying a contractor?
The, uh, the, all of the fees that the golf course has incurred had been fixed already last summer.
Okay.
So we've been, I've been trying to work with PKG to get them to pay the bill. And so this has been sitting there and sitting there. The golf course actually had, uh, borrow money from one of their members along with paying part of the bill. So there's actually, there should be some interest involved in this because the act, I think the actual bill was twenty-seven thousand and some change. I rounded it to thirty thousand for the interest and stuff and, and that, that's a reasonable number by the golf, for the golf course too.
And do we, are, will we be able to see that bill to?
If we have, yeah, if we get to that point, yes, I will put that together.
Okay.
I'm just a little confused why they're, you have this hundred and fifty thousand, you said?
Hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I think.
For damages, yeah, but they're not coming through the city, they're coming through, they're going privately to the country club and dealing with them individually, not going through us.
Well, they, PKG doesn't necessarily want to have liquidated damages. It doesn't look good for insurance and bonding and stuff like that. So my thought process is, is they probably have an idea that we're probably looking at this as part of our liquidated damages, so that if they can get something worked out with the golf course.
They don't want it on their record, so they're gonna do, go around that.
If they can avoid that, they will.
Separate.
Yes. And for us, to be quite honest with you, I'd prefer to have it gone, go that direction also.
If we're not getting involved, that'd be great.
Yes. So at this point, if the council could, would be willing to allow us to go down that road, but not go down that road at this point. To, for, the motion would be to approve the, uh, thirty thousand dollar payment to the golf course, but we aren't going to do, knowing that we aren't going to do it, providing that PKG and the golf course can come to a reasonable arrangement outside of that.
What are they looking for, for a timeline of when they would anticipate the, the negotiations?
That I can't, I can't give you that because I'm not sure. Uh, I would get a phone call from one of their board members saying, hey, negotiations have gone out the window, so we need to go this route.
Okay, I just wanted to have it.
Why do we need to approve payment now?
Yeah, what if we table this till our next meeting?
I'm not gonna approve payment if we're not gonna take the payment.
Well, it would be a contingent motion, so it would be contingent on the negotiation between.
Right.
Failing. Could we wait two weeks?
We can wait, if that's what you'd like.
How about the eighty or ninety thousand, can we proceed with that?
Uh.
Well, we need to wait till the project.
I'd kind of wait till the end of the construction to do that because that, really what happens is you don't get paid. They, it comes out of the contingency cost and then it's also a negotiation as far as how much you.
So the country club has to wait too, in essence?
Well, if we, if we wait for that, my thought was to pay them and then, because if we don't pay them, we don't have a, we don't have a, an injury. So there is no damages then. So if we wait till the end, then there is no damage to the golf course. So if we pay them, then there is a damage.
So the idea here is that if a private citizen gets damaged by PKG, the city would have to pay for it and then we get reimbursed by PKG through this fund.
That is, that's an option.
That's the way we, we would be doing it.
Or, or PKG work it out. I think we should postpone this so that we don't muddle their negotiation. They know the city's on the line to pay it. Maybe they're.
Let's just keep it clean.
Okay, let's table it. So I move, I move to table this to our next, uh, council meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to table this topic until next council meeting. Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy, any discussion?
Can we give?
I, I'd like to point out too, though, um, this kind of puts them in a bad spot too, because I know they, they lost a lot of revenue last year because of the course being torn up. And nothing to do with it, but they've lost a lot of revenue this year because of the COVID issue. Um, and I know they're probably in a difficult spot to begin with, and a lot of it was because of the, the course being torn up last year. And if we delay it longer, it, it puts them in a real difficult position. And I think we've probably kind of got to take that in consideration.
Well, PKG is negotiating with them, can we give like a June first deadline or a May thirty-first deadline as a?
I, I apologize, I did not catch that.
He said that if there are negotiations with PKG, can we set a date to encourage that negotiation to be done by?
That, that sounds great.
Yeah, but I don't know if you heard me, Tom. PKG contacted me later last week and wanted to contact the golf course to negotiate with them directly.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna set a deadline.
And if that does fall through, or if it doesn't get to what they're looking for, then I, I think we should just go ahead and have, you know, this other plan in place.
What, what's the date of our next council meeting?
The eleven?
Mark, May eleventh.
So would May tenth be too soon? So we can.
It gives them like three weeks or two weeks.
Yeah, I don't think that would be awful at this point.
Tom, how do you feel about May tenth deadline?
I think that sounds great.
Make your motion?
Um, yes.
Yeah, he tabled it to the next meeting, which is. We didn't vote on that yet, though.
We can vote on that and then.
So, let's, let's vote on this particular issue.
Just on the tabling?
Yes, on the tabling.
I don't think we need a motion for the May tenth deadline, do we?
Yeah, if we, well, yeah, if you table it, you have to take it up at the next council meeting anyway, so that is, that is the next, yeah, so that's, that's the eleventh, so yeah, okay.
Okay, so any other discussion?
Just real quick, I found out, Melanie messaged me, she must be watching from home.
Must be.
That liquidated damages come off the top, it's just money not paid to the contractor.
Oh.
So we say, you know, you made us endure these, incur these expenses, so we'll pay your contract minus that amount.
I tried to say that.
Yep. Sometimes it gets into litigation.
So it's a credit against the bill.
But it can be, um, can become contested.
Sure.
Okay, please call a roll on that. To table. Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that issue will be tabled until the next council meeting on May eleventh. Uh, is that all from you, Aaron?
I'm done finally.
If I can just ask a question, just to go back to the very first point about, uh, uh, the governor relaxing the various restrictions related to COVID, uh, matter, COVID crisis. I, I felt like there was something else you wanted to add, or is there some other additional comment you want to make about the city's preparation or the city's the change in how we're doing things, are we gonna, are we gonna do anything going forward?
Uh, I just want to be cautious. Um, I, I think, I think with, with our community and with, with thinking of safety for our employees first, I think it's good, good to, yes, it's okay to start, I personally believe it's okay to start opening some things, but I also think for the safety of our employees and stuff, I think it's good to kind of take a step back and make sure that we do this in a, uh, smart fashion, so just with, with this, looking at the May eleventh date to have, to change our emergency plan that we put into place the last council meeting? That we just, we have a good idea and are comfortable with the pre, the proposal that we put forward to you on the eleventh, rather than just say, hey, let's do this tonight and then not have a good, not have it well thought through.
I think that's a smart move. Just keep everything the way it is until May eleventh, then we can look at a plan that you come up with and give it approval.
Thank you.
So we'll be taking this basically in two or three steps, however much it takes, and certainly there'll be testing going on through May, and, uh, we certainly don't want to go backwards. I think our county has been very fortunate with only six cases. And, uh, you know, we don't want all of a sudden that things blow up, so if we can take this in a couple of steps, I think that's.
Can we ask the committees that kind of stand alone, like the library, I know they have their own committee, but can we just ask that they work as part of a team as we roll this out? I mean, Park and Rec has its own committee, Library has its own committee, but they're all city employees. Can we ask those boards to work together?
Park and Rec doesn't have authority to make, take any action, do they?
Well, yeah, Park and Rec is an advisory board. However, the library can do, per their board, has the authority to do what they want now. So yes, we can ask the library board to work as part of our.
Team.
Team.
Yeah, same thing with Carnegie, right? They have their own board?
That's again, an advisory only. So, so the library is essentially on their own, however, the rest of the city employees are, are under our authority, so we can set something that way. And, and kind of like what we did with the emergency plan initially, we just said, we'd recommend you to do this.
Okay, I would just like to see us all, yeah.
As well as all the buildings.
No, no point, well taken. We want to be consistent throughout the city.
Absolutely.
So.
Makes it easier on the public to know what's open and not, also.
And we want to be consistent with our emergency management and our public health so that they're also supporting what we're doing. And the county, you know, supervisors too, in their decision-making. I think that helps if we're all being consistent. Yep, so. Um, before we go on with the rest of the committee, uh, reports, uh, we skipped over the mayor's report. Uh, John, did you have anything tonight?
Well, I'm gonna talk with you during the closed session.
Okay. Okay, okay, so let's, let's go then back to committee and board reports. Um, anything else on the water and sewer? We got all that taken care of then, okay? Um, Economic Development Committee, Michael?
We met six thirty this evening. One agenda item was this mixed-use zone. Uh, if you click that link, and I know a lot of us attended the meeting with the gentleman who talked all about planning and zoning, that last year or the year before. And one thing is when you have a lot of variances coming in a certain area, that's usually an indication that zoning is out of step with what's going on. Uh, to try to give a little bit of perspective, the green area there on the right includes the old Harper Brush Building. It's at the intersection, the northwest corner of, uh, Grimes and Second Street. It's been purchased now by Brettopia, and that is currently, uh, M-one, manufacturing one zone. And the property on the other side of the railroad tracks, which is the former IDO ready-mix building, is also still a manufacturer zone. That particular building is already very much mixed-use. There's a gym in there, there was a commercial kitchen. Uh, and each of time that a person wants to use it for something other than what it's zoned for, they have to get a variance, and it becomes very paperwork-intensive. Between to, uh, between the two green sections, the manufacturing, there's, uh, two new triplexes that were just recently built on the property that used to be Saint Mary's Church, so now you've got multi-residential. And then along Fourth Street, currently, that's that orange area is all B-one, it's business district, it's treated the same way as our downtown. Historically, there would have been a reason for that when the trains stopped at the depot and businesses would have flourished. Uh, nothing's flourishing for the most part. A few things are flourishing, but for a lot of time, a lot of those properties are empty, very dilapidated, and in need of some renovation. Uh, we have an example where a local citizen bought a, a one-story building and wanted to live on the first floor, but B-one zoning prohibits that. Question is, in that area, does it matter? Does it matter more that the building is occupied and being, being kept up? So in an effort to make our zones and our, um, city code match reality, we have an area that's already very mixed-use. And to cut down on the variances and to potentially even encourage some development, we're recommending the section with the striped red would be a new zone. We don't have this yet in the city. This is new territory for the city of Fairfield. Other cities have already done this, uh, and found it to be useful, where you allow a mix of uses. So instead of just R-three, which is multi-residential, or just B-one business, or just M-one light manufacturing, in this particular area, we would allow any and all of those uses on each property. So again, it's already a mix of those three, but by allowing a little more flexibility, we'd hope to encourage some development down there. Um, again, there are properties that are included in this that are already moving in that direction. The former Human Factors Building, that's on the end of Low Street, behind Loglack, used to be office, and now it's, it's a lot of things. And so, um, again, M-one is the, the most restrictive manufacturing. It only allows certain things. It does not allow, um, scrap yards or, um, uh, raw materials or, you know, real heavy industry. It's very light. And you've got some of that going on already on the old Saint Mary's property, commercial kitchens. And this would also allow Brettopia, who wants to also open a little shop in their building, to do so without needing a variance. So again, we're trying to make it a little easier to develop this area and, uh, and hope to see some rehabilitation. So what we need to do, if the council likes this concept, is send it to Planning and Zoning to work out the details. So each one of those zones has its own setbacks and such, so we need to define what, what are the setbacks? So each one of those zones has its own setbacks and such, so we need to define what what are the setbacks in this mixed use zone. So there's a little bit of legwork that needs to be done, planning and zoning, um, commission would do that. And then come back to the council with something that we could then pass through and change our code. This is the first step. I will open it up to questions if anyone has questions or comments.
Seems a very good idea. So I would move that we refer this to planning and zoning.
All right, is there a second?
So it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Hallie to uh move this mixed use to planning and zoning for them to work out some details.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would just like to know, um, in that minor manufacturing stuff, you know, chemicals can be used. And I've been hearing about some of those three D things that are made now with some interesting solutions. And I get kinda nervous when people, I find out people are using it in their basements and stuff like that. But um, that would concern me if we had residential mixed with somebody doing cause that's still considered light manufacturing, but it's using some pretty intense chemicals. And so I would just say I'd like to have, make sure you have that discussed.
And that's part of, those are part of the details that would get worked out, where it could be a version of M one, but it doesn't include all the things that M one includes, because it's.
Presently, because we're readjusting the whole.
It's a basically, it's, we're creating a new zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Um, Michael, you gonna talk about the city tree list then?
Sure. So gentleman, Steve Taylor, who we have approved to be on the Arbor Commission, took a look at if, Jason, if you click the current list. The current list that's posted on the city website of allowable trees in the right of way and and then not recommended. He took a look at and just dove in with a little deeper understanding of trees and recommended uh, the other list, which is called the updated list. And it's, you can see it's a lot more extensive and just in talking to him, some of the factors are, uh, when you plant in right of way, you don't want anything with especially invasive roots that would get into water lines or sewer lines. You don't really want trees that are, um, have a lot of limb or bark uh debris, or nuts, or that kinda thing, that would then cause issues in the streets and sidewalks. And then uh, always native is always best, you know, native tree, it's suited for the environment. So um, taking off non-natives. So this is the list that we'd like to then take over to the Arbor Commission. And then they'll bring back a recommendation. So this is Steve's second or third draft. I think he's actually got a fourth draft in mind. And then, again, would love to see Ray Leonard, District Forester chime in and so um, I don't know if there's any action unless we just wanna move to bring this to Arbor Commission, which I would do so.
I'd move to uh refer this to the Arbor Committee. We'll refine it, refer to council.
Okay. It's been moved by Flornoy, I guess, seconded by Michael. Okay. Um, any other discussion?
So we can do an inventory with this, right?
Well, the inventory we got for free back in twenty fourteen, the DNR did that, and that was street tree inventory. I will say, since that time, we've lost many, many more street trees than we've planted. The city doesn't plant street trees, it's up to the adjacent property owner. Now Melanie is working on a right-of-way permit process for any work in the right-of-way. And I really would prefer that the sh- the planting of a tree or shrub not have a fee attached, but that's, you know, neither here nor there, it doesn't really cost us anything. But the permitting process is important because it it reminds the property owner, call Iowa one call, to make sure they locate the buried utilities. It's important, is if you just plant a tree somewhere and you don't know that you're right on top of.
Right, but we also want that tree to conform to this list.
We really prefer it, yeah. So um, there are.
Respect, we might want to require it, because we don't.
Well, that's the permit process.
We don't want limbs.
Yep.
I mean, roots that are going into our sewer lines.
Yep, you plant a tree and it's small and it's cute, and a couple decades later and it's causing some sort of issue. So yeah, we wanna put the right tree in the right place.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that's passed and referred to the Arbor Committee. Um, Michael, you wanna organize that, getting getting them together?
Yeah, we might do a remote meeting, but we'll get it done.
Okay, great. Okay, any other committee reports? Seeing none, uh, we are going to go into, well, and anything else for the good of the order at this point. Um, we're gonna go into closed session, so I'd like a um, motion to go into closed session.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Uh, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, we are now going into closed session.